All right, I'll call to meeting, or call to order the regular meeting of the Common Council of the City of Platteville for Tuesday, February 10th, 2015, and we'll start with roll call.
Ken Killian.
Here.
Eileen Nichols.
Here.
Amy Seboth Wilson.
Here.
Mike Den.
Here.
Barbara Dos.
Yes.
Barbara Stackhausen.
Here.
And Dick Bonin has been excused.
First item on our agenda this evening is a special presentation from the Platteville Economic Development Advisory Group, and we'll have Ed White.
Good evening, thanks for the time on your agenda this evening, I'm going to be short and sweet. I just handed out to you the purpose statement for our group, and then our goals for 2015, which haven't changed a lot, honestly, from 2014, they're kind of ongoing efforts that we want to do. The Platteville Economic Development Advisory Group is made up of the Chamber, the Main Street Program, UW Platteville, Southwest Tech, Grant County Economic Development, and Platteville Business Incubator, and of course, the city. This group was brought together a few years ago to kind of work cooperatively, collaboratively, to make sure we aren't repeating efforts or doing things, you know, together instead of separately, and so this was actually Barb, I believe while you were council president, kind of asked us to form this, and then it went away for a couple of years, and then we actually self-started again on Jack's suggestion about three years ago now. So we meet once a month and just get together and talk about things that we can do as our individual organizations and we can do together to make that Platteville a better place economically. So you can see the goals for 15, I'm not going to go through them, but a couple of things we're working on right now is with Paydick, Paydick is the other member, I forgot him. One of our prime members, Paydick is looking to do some social slash networking opportunities for business owners in the park, to get them to network and know each other better and see where they might be able to share, or where we're, there may be gaps in the supply chain that we can try to attract to Platteville if we know who's using what, okay? So kind of a buyer-supplier network is one of the things we're working on. One of the things we had also been working on with Paydick as the leader was University of Wisconsin's system had some innovation grants, I believe it was last year or the year before, they gave like $23 million, we're looking to do that again for this next three-year cycle, and obviously, everybody should know that everything is on tape these days, so that's a lot likely to happen, but when those opportunities come up, that's the kind of things where they were looking for projects that had higher education, so UWP, Southwest Tech had local economic development and municipalities involved, those were the perfect kind of projects or partnerships that they were looking for. So that's where a group like this can really be of benefit to the city. And then we're also here, obviously, just to, if you guys want any advice from the economic development professionals in your community, we're always there to discuss anything that you want to bring to us, so feel free to contact myself, Jack, Kathy, city manager, Joe Carroll also attends those meetings, so, any questions? If not, I've got other things I can do. Thanks, I don't have to sit there anymore.
Thank you, Ed. Next item is consideration of the consent calendar, the following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature of previous discussion, please indicate to the council president if you would prefer separate discussion and action. Excuse me, A is minutes of the January 27th, 2015 regular council meeting, B is payment of bills, C is financial report for January, D is appointments to boards and commissions, I have none this evening, E is licenses, one-year and two-year operators licenses and taxi driver license, F is permits, a banner permit to the American Cancer Society for 4615 through 42815, and another banner permit to United Way of Platteville for 91415 to 103015. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Seboth Wilson.
Yes.
Den.
Yes.
Dos.
Yes.
Stackhausen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item, citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, I have one this evening, but that's for issue that we'll be discussing later, so I'll call on that individual at that time, that's the only one that I have.
Council President.
Yes.
I would like to mention that I recently attended through the web, a webinar that was put on by the Wisconsin League of Municipalities, and talked about budget issues, and I would like to remind council people that next Wednesday, I believe that's the 18th, is the Wisconsin League of Municipality Lobbying Day at the state Capitol, you should probably all have received some information about that. Some of the big, one of the big items in the governor's budget as it relates to municipalities is a switch from our current property tax assessment system to a county-based system that in fact supposedly would be, begin next year in 2016 and be completed by 2017, so that will be something that would directly affect this city, switching to a county-based system. Of course, the transportation issue is a big one, and I'm sure you've all read about that, probably another big thing in the governor's budget that affects cities a lot is combining the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, which was formed in last year's budget, with the Wisconsin Housing and Economic Development Association, WEDC and WHEDA, to a new agency called, I think, the Forward Wisconsin Development Authority. So lots of things, I will be going to the Capitol next Wednesday and have arranged an appointment with Representative Tranel at this point, and have a pending appointment with Senator Markline, I know there are many others from southwest Wisconsin that will also go, if you've never done this, I suggest that you think about it, because it's a very enlightening opportunity.
Any other reports from any council members? All right, we'll go on to the next item, which is committee reports, council or staff representative is listed afterwards, community development board, Seboth Wilson.
Nothing to add.
Redevelopment authority Dos.
Nothing to add.
Other reports in your packet, city attorney, itemized statement, water and sewer financial report for January.
Your addition.
Airport financial report for January, and the department progress reports.
I would just like to remind everybody that there's an election next week, we have a primary election, there's a school board member, and then an at-large alderperson for council.
And are you still doing absentee ballots?
Absentees through this week, 5:00.
Through this week on Friday?
Yep.
First action item is ordinance 1501, amending sections 201 and 203 due to annexation of the municipal airport. Jan.
Okay, as discussed at last, the last meeting, this ordinance comes about because of the annexation of the municipal airport, since the property is non-contiguous to the city, it necessitates the creation of a new election ward, election ward number nine, that we're going to name it, and it's located in county supervisory district 15, and Grant County would like it to remain in county, Grant County District 15. So what this does is creates a new election ward with a new county supervisory district, and makes it part of the City of Platteville Alderman district number four.
Anybody have any questions?
Move to adopt ordinance 1501, amending section 2.01, adding territory to Alderman district four, county supervisory district 15, and creating election ward nine, and amending section 2.03, parent one, parent A, polling places due to annexation of property, Platteville Municipal Airport.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll vote.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Seboth Wilson.
Yes.
Den.
Yes.
Dos.
Yes.
Stackhausen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next one is ordinance 1503, amending sections 3118A and 3119 taxi licenses. Jan, I believe this is you again.
The intent of this ordinance is to clarify the language in our current taxi ordinance, to make sure that the shuttle bus and shuttle bus drivers, as part of the new Platteville transit system, will require a taxi license or a taxi driver license as approved by the City of Platteville. Previously, they did not have to be, they were not required to be licensed.
Any questions? There a motion?
Move adoption of ordinance 1503, amending section 3118, parent A, taxi and/or taxi driver licenses, and title of section 31.19, license fee enter.
There a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Seboth Wilson.
I'll abstain, I think it may be a conflict of interest.
Den.
Yes.
Dos.
Yes.
Stackhausen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item, city manager position profile, advertisement and salary range, we received information from the Public Administration Associates regarding suggested language for advertisement for the position, also some information on a position profile, so that anyone looking at the position has something to read about the city, and then also suggested salary range. Anyone have any questions on any of that?
Council President, I, there is a need for some clarification and correction in the position profile as it defines, as it talks about our organization, in this I put that, it says there are 89 fully benefited staff, and while there are 89 staff that receive benefits, 77 of those staff are full-time, 12 are part-time, it also indicates that staff, staffing reaches more than 250 at seasonal peaks, and I thought, geez, that seems like a lot, but then Jan pointed out that all the poll workers are actually city employees, and if you take the poll workers and the city council and the lifeguards, all of these folks who work in a seasonal or in adjunct or ad hoc or whatever basis, I suspect that that, Duane, did you do 250 W-2s?
Actually, I had 299.
So I know it's hard to believe that we would have had that many, but that's, when you count all those other folks and add, if you have a couple of elections and not the same people work at every election, that means that those numbers go up, so I believe we'll need to correct those numbers.
Any other questions or comments? There's a lot of things, a lot to read, but if every-
I've had a chance to look this over, and I think you've done a very good job with this, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the city manager's profile as written, and Barb needs to make a correction, I don't think she does now, since Duane clarified we have a lot of people in those positions, so as written.
So the position profile, advertisement, and the salary range?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, is there any need for further discussion? All right, we'll vote.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Seboth Wilson.
Yes.
Den.
Yes.
Dos.
Yes.
Stackhausen.
Okay.
Motion carries.
The next item, when I get to the right page here, is there information and discussion, it's, first item is the final plat, the first addition to Golden Heights subdivision, Joe?
Okay, yeah, this is a request to divide property that was originally planted as an outlot in the Golden Heights subdivision, it's located on Ready Drive, it's about 1.9 acres, the property owner would like to divide that into five lots. Back in 2009, the preliminary plat was approved to do this, that was approved with several conditions, most of them were related to an issue with the stormwater conveyance through this property, as far as how that's going to be managed through the extension of a culvert, and who's responsible between the city and the property owner and so forth, and the other condition was regarding placing a note on the plat regarding the fact that there had been fill placed on these lots, just to make the property owners aware of that. So the preliminary plat was approved, the final plat was submitted in 2011, that was approved by the Plan Commission with essentially those same conditions, and then the council also approved that final plat with those conditions. Most of those conditions had been agreed to by the property owner, there was some disagreement about the need for the placement of that note regarding the fill, because that's a condition the city has never placed on a plat before, we didn't really have a policy or ordinance related to that type of notation, so it never really went any further than that. The applicant has resubmitted a final plat to divide the lot, as mentioned, into five building lots, we have a preliminary development agreement that would address all of the items regarding the stormwater conveyance that were some of the conditions of the approval, so that takes care of most of the items that were a concern initially. Back in 2011, the council denied this request, basically because it did not meet all of those conditions, so at this point, the development agreement takes care of, I think, all of the items except the notation condition, so that's the one outstanding item yet, but staff feels that with the conditions in the development agreement, it takes care of the majority of the concerned items that were addressed, as this plat was addressed previously, so that, in fact, that the lots do meet our zoning and subdivision requirements, we would recommend approval. Any questions?
Well, my question is, if the notation were put on the plat, would the developer or seller of the lot or lots be required to disclose that to the people? Is that going to make a difference? They can look at it and say, look at the property and say, this is fill. What's more concerned to me is that in that fill, there's materials such as trees, which have been buried, I'm more concerned about that, the burial of items that could result in settling in the future and the damage to property, and if there's damage to the property as far as settling, is the city responsible for not saying something about this? So that goes back, that's a question I have for city attorney, do we have liability as far as passage of this plat if the fill consists of material which is, I'll call it substandard?
As far as I'm aware, the city's not a party to the sale, we didn't ever own this land, we never auth, we didn't put any fill on this property that we're aware of, this has all been from other sources besides the city, and we'll be making, making no representation to any buyer as to the existence of fill or not on this property, and I don't think that the city has any particular liability to a prospective purchaser. There is, in connection with the sale of vacant land, a real estate disclosure form that owners are required to provide buyers, if the offer requires it, and I believe in the standard form, there's a, there is a notation or the inquiry, where the owner is asked to respond to a statement as to whether or not the owner's aware of fill, of the property being filled, so there may be some opportunity there for disclosure of what was or was not put on there by the owner.
My first question, Joe, is whoever could answer this, if the notation was on there, would it make a difference as far as somebody has to say that this is actually fill?
Well, I mean, the notation would be on the plat, the plat would be recorded, so it'd be a public document that could be searchable by anybody who's interested in those lots.
But somebody selling the property wouldn't have to disclose it?
I, I don't know.
They leave it up to the buyer, the potential buyer to say, oh yeah, that's fill?
I don't know the answer to that question.
The owner is here and is asked to speak, so perhaps this would be an appropriate time for him to respond to the question as well. You want to come up to the microphone, please? For our purposes, if you would give your name and your address, please?
My name is Perez Ready, I reside at 989 Veterans Memorial Road, outside the city limits of Platteville, I have been a resident in the area for the last 39 years, and I have this land left over, or outlot, so to speak, of the original Golden Heights subdivision. If the only issue I'm supposed to address is the fill, I would be glad to address that. Councilman Killian keeps bringing this issue up as far as trees and substandard fill. There are a lot of lots in Platteville that have similar fill, which were, the fill came from the improvement that was done on Pine Street, when the sewer was replaced, and some of the other projects within the city of Platteville. So I was very diligent, I believe, as far as monitoring what was fill put in there, because I have developed real estate, I didn't want my real estate property be contaminated. So at previous meetings, someone had mentioned that there were tires, the tires were kept at a location there for crossing of street by graders and doses, so that the tracks and those equipment didn't damage the road or the curb. Secondly, every material that went, or most of, the material that went in there was subsoil from the streets, and some other locations where the basements were dug, the extra dirt was put in there. I had removed, I had personally instructed some of the people who are delivering fill there to remove all the material, there were culvert material, pieces of culvert were removed from there, there were pipes, they were removed from there, or any kind of metal that was removed from there, and they were delivered to, I believe, First Capital in Belma, by the people who were bringing in, because I said, hey, you're going to bring in the dirt, if anything of that kind of material comes in here, you'll have to take it out, and you can have it, you can take it to salvage and recover the salvage value. So that's what happened. As far as trees concerned, and I believe reading at some previous reports, Mr. Killian had mentioned there were trees in there, and he had pictures, the lot that had the trees is the lot that was sold to Dr. Conley, that's adjacent to this property, and if you look at an original or an old aerial map, that's where most of the concentration of the trees were, and that's where the trees were not even taken down, they were filled in, the dirt was filled in against it, and that's what kept the dirt from shifting down to the bottom of, into university property. So that's where, if anybody wants to do some investigation, that's where the trees are, and the trees were buried in there. In my property, we had removed the trees, we had pushed the trees onto the adjacent property, which was the university property, and then it was burnt. So, and that fill has been there for several years now, it's going over 10 years, and we are mowing it, and there has been no settling or any kind of ponding or anything, then water flows freely off. So, and to address the issue about letting prospective buyers be aware, there is a form, the council president is a realtor herself, or was a realtor, she is experienced in that all offers, or when they are received, they have certain conditions to be met, and this is, there is the form, I don't know the form by number, but there is a form by State of Wisconsin, that even if I'm listing the property with a realtor, I have to fill that property condition report. In that report, I am obligated to disclose, to even say for my own liability purposes, what the prospective buyer is buying. So in that form, I will fill out that there is fill brought in this property, and I'll also tell them what kind of fill. So if there is any other question, I'll be glad to answer.
Any other questions?
Oh, I don't know if this is a question of Joe, or if this is a question of Mr. Ready, but does, does the north side of these lots back up against wetland? Is there a crick there?
Then the, I had the DNR people there before I started putting fill in the property, they had, they are aware of where the floodplain is, and my property was not in the floodplain, it's, it's in a designation which is called fringe floodplain.
Have you had them back, I mean, many laws have changed in the last four or five years relative to those things, and so my concern is that the lots and things as they are today would have to live up to today's law, not the law of 2009 or 2011, so my question is whether DNR has again reviewed this, and if it's not prudent for the city to require that prior to any kind of approval.
I can speak for myself, as far as if the area, the floodplain, floodplain designations don't change, they are based on certain amount of grade, what do you call the, the term escapes my memory right now, but there is a certain contour lines that are, they do not change, they only change if the land below the grade level is filled to a well where the water line during flood will go back, but there is no filling below that, so.
Brian, you were going to respond?
I just would point out that the development agreement contemplates that there may be additional requirements for building on this property in terms of the design of stormwater retention facilities and other things that did not exist when this was last back in front of the council. So we have put provisions in here that if DNR, if this development would require DNR approval of certain stormwater facilities, that that would be a condition that the developer would have to satisfy by virtue of the development agreement, and we are, the staff is asking that the council approve the final plat, subject to the development agreement being executed by the developer. Go ahead.
I guess, go ahead.
I would also add that the property is not in a floodplain, I do recall that being an issue when they did, were doing the filling, and that was addressed at that time. I did pose the question about the stormwater requirements too, Austin Engineering, who's the applicant's engineer, and he confirmed that that is not a requirement for this plat, but we do have it in the agreement that if anything is found out otherwise, it's the property owner's responsibility to meet those requirements.
As a matter of process relative to these kinds of issues, isn't it customary for these to go through the Plan Commission first, including the developers' agreement?
The Plan Commission typically does not approve the development agreements, they would approve the plat, and they've already voted on the final plat, they voted to approve it, it got, I guess, sung up last time at the council level when it was denied for not meeting all those conditions of the plat, so at this point, the Plan Commission's already voted on- So at this point, the plan commission's already voted on this final plat. It's been a while.
Excuse me, Joe, would that take into condition any law changes, though, where we might have to go back to the planning commission first to, if any new laws? I know we haven't mentioned anything about the extension of the culvert.
There are no law changes that I'm aware of that would impact the plat itself.
Oh, okay.
The, the issue with the culvert is, you know, as far as the stormwater culvert onto this property, that's, those issues are addressed through that development agreement.
That is also addressed, then, you'd say?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I note in the developer's agreement that there is a blank date. Now, of course, we don't have any, and it says that it's going to be the city's responsibility to do this. I'm assuming that means financial responsibility. I'm trying to find it. The city's obligation shall at no cost to the developer extend the existing stormwater culvert, install riprap, and construct an end wall. The city shall complete the above construction by whenever in 2015. My understand, this would not be a budgeted item, so, and I have no clue, there is no costs associated with this. I'm a little concerned about obligating for cost in 2015 that hasn't been budgeted, especially when I don't know what that potential cost might be.
I've looked at it, and I believe that, that we could meet these obligations at about $10,000.
And does that include any engineering fee associated with meeting those?
I would have to review that, but it would be relatively small at that point.
And so then you would assume that you would find that $10,000 to $15,000 in your current public works budget?
We haven't discussed that internally, but that's one of the things that we would need to discuss before coming for action.
And that, that's one of the reasons there is no date inserted into that, so that...
It does say, comma, 2015. So that is next year.
Because the, the agreement, I drafted it this year, so we can put in whatever date the council agrees to. If the council would like to change that to 2016 or 17, that would work, too.
As long as it's acceptable to Mr. Ready as well.
Probably don't want to negotiate at a council meeting.
No, I, I, I'm just pointing out that there aren't any, that there are costs associated with this, that those costs have not been outlined, and I'm a little reluctant to agree to something without knowing what those costs would be and where that money would come from.
So you're requesting that information be available at the next meeting?
Exactly.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Ready, anything else that you wanted to offer, or? We don't have any more questions for you, but if there's anything else you wanted to say? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Paris.
All right. Next item is a potential lease of City Hall space, and I believe that Jack Ludkey is going to be speaking to us.
I'm Jack Ludkey, the executive director for the Platteville Main Street program. And I have distributed tonight, before the meeting started, a proposal that I've been directed to give to the council by my board of directors, that outlines a potential plan for the use of the, partial use of the space where the old police station was in this building. And for the sake of time, I won't go through and read it. I'll let you folks read it, since we're only on for information, and I know there's an event scheduled tonight at eight o'clock, so we have to move you along. But I would like to make a couple of points. In particular, the outline in green on the map shows the area that we are looking at. And one of the reasons that this came to our attention was from some gentlemen from the university who wanted to find some relatively inexpensive space that had high-speed internet access, that they could begin an opportunity to develop some software. The gentlemen are with us tonight, in the audience just listening. And this has been a, an opportunity that our board has looked at several times over the last few years. And it came to our attention, again, that this building is one of the few in the downtown area, if not the only one, that has that high-speed internet. And it has vacant space for probably, what, four years? That the city council is considering redeveloping the entire building, but it comes down to a cost issue right now. So as you will read in the proposal, we would like to present to you an opportunity to utilize that space, even on a temporary basis. If it came to a decision point where the council decided, yes, we've got the money, we're going to renovate the building and move forward, we would request a time period to be able to relocate and find additional space. We have also been approached by other folks who would be interested in moving into this area. We would like to keep professional people downtown, which helps support the other businesses downtown, and makes it a strong, vibrant area in the heart of our city. And we would also like to keep young entrepreneurial gentlemen like these folks in Platteville after they graduate from the university here. And we think they'd make fine-upstanding citizens long-term of Platteville. So having said all of that, if you have any questions, I've listed both my email address and phone number, and you can call me, and we can discuss any of the details. And if you have questions tonight about it, I'd be happy to address those as well.
Is this an action item, or just conversation?
This is information.
Okay.
I just have one question, and that, Jack, is on your proposal. After all upfront costs to prepare the space are covered. So all upfront costs to prepare the space, is that covered by you, or is that covered by Mr. Den?
Yeah.
Or how is that covered?
Well, as you know, we are a nonprofit organization that works on a very low budget.
Right.
We have a lot of very creative volunteers, however, who would come in there and, we would hope, at a very low cost, do the necessary cleanup and painting, and I've even talked to some of the gentlemen about their participation in that. There is some discussion that has been held about maintaining the security of the emergency equipment that is still housed there. We feel we can do that with one wall being constructed, a temporary wall, so there'd be very little of that upfront maintenance and cost involved. And after that time period, then we would discuss with the city the separation of the lease payments, if we can agree on a, and create a revenue stream back to the city for the, for the building, but also allow us some funds to maintain the administrative aspect of managing the facility. We've also had, as I said, some additional people who are interested on the, on the space.
It was the same budget item I just talked about in the previous discussion. Any other questions?
Is this coming back for information and action, or what's...
It would be coming back for action.
This is our information and discussion evening, and next time it will be back for action, so if you have questions, you're certainly in contact, Jack, and...
Who are you working with for leasing and upgrade and all those kinds of things? I assume the city manager?
Yeah, it's indicated in there that we would like some attention from the city manager and the city attorney for a simple lease.
Thank you.
Agreement with Main Street. The real key here is the high-speed internet access that this building has.
Is this long-term? Is that your plan eventually, long-term, for a while?
How long is your term to reconstruct the building? That's, that's going to be the indicator. We've asked, we've asked for a time period in there to get notice, so that we can relocate somewhere else. But, you know, if you decide tomorrow you've got the money and you're going to do it, well, then that's a decision you have to make. We'd just like to see the space occupied. We'd like to see the ability to give the opportunity to these young entrepreneurs at a very reasonable price to have access to the high-speed internet in a downtown location. And this could present the perfect opportunity until you folks decide you're going to use it for something else.
You do say in here that the city would give Main Street at least 120 days' notice if the lease needs to be terminated due to renovation of the building space, so there is a statement in there that would cover Barb's question.
Thank you.
And then last statement says, anything else that you want to throw in there? Because I know there's always other contingencies that we'd have to discuss.
Well, you know, there's some space not being used. Is that future growth, plan for future growth?
Sure.
Thank you. So, Jack, just a quick question. I assume what you will be discussing with Larry and others over the next couple of weeks is the terms of the lease, like the pricing and everything. So what my thought, as I'm thinking through this, is I hope that the price is kept really affordable, because I think this is a great project, and I want to see it work. I have no idea what most people are able to pay for rent, but I'm assuming that hopefully this is very little burden on the city, where I'm assuming heating that space already. So somewhat, okay. These are questions that'll have to be worked out, but to get it to a price where it's bare minimum, that it covers some of our costs, like electricity and stuff, would be nice. I think it's a very good project, and I'd love to see it happen.
You killed the mic, there it is. That's the aim of the Main Street program, and our mission really is to create that atmosphere downtown, and that's why we want to do it. And it's not to make money off of, off of this endeavor, it's to create that space available to, to allow entrepreneurs like this to really test the water before they spend a lot of money on moving out there and find out six months down the line, it doesn't work, they're not making any money. Then I told the gentlemen, tonight, when they get up to their $100,000 income level, then we'll all negotiate a new lease.
That's great. I would just say that the city has some experience in this, in supporting this type of endeavor, because we do have a business incubator in the industry park.
Yes, and we don't want to be competitive to, to them either.
And we have had several graduations from that incubator that are big and thriving businesses in this city, so. All right.
Any other questions?
It's a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That completes information and discussion, so the next item is closed session. There are two closed sessions proposed this evening, so we need a motion for both, please.
Motion to adjourn to closed session and possibly return, or possible, return to open session for possible action, per Wisconsin State statute 1985, parent one, parent E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties for a possible land acquisition, and per Wisconsin statute 1985, parent one, parent E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, proposed airing contract settlement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Sebold, Wilson?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we are back in open session, and pursuant to the discussion that we had in closed session, is there a motion?
Yes, and this motion is made in conjunction with the second of the closed sessions, airing contract settlement. I move that we accept a donation of $10,000 to, from airings in settlement of our backhoe contract dispute, and I further move that we authorize staff to solicit bids for a new backhoe.
My second.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote. Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Sebold, Wilson?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. Move vote. Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Sebold, Wilson?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you, everybody.